We are live from the Oakley Senior Center in downtown Oakley. Having our candidate forum tonight here. We want to thank the Friends of Oakley for helping co-host this with us tonight. And a big shout out to the Oakley Senior Center, who also has helped co-chair and co-sponsoring this tonight. And I do want to let you know that they have some applications in the back. If you are interested in joining the Senior Center, they would love to hear from you. So with that, I would like to introduce my good friend, Mr. John. And he's going to be our moderator this evening. So with that, I will turn it over to John.
That was a lucky break. I was wondering if a break gets a microphone. Really never comes back. Anyways, we're here. Thank you all. I am really excited to be with you tonight. And there's something about the coziness of this room that makes a event like this particularly warm and interesting. We did last week down in Brentwood in that big old Senior Center. And you know, you almost had to have a microphone for everybody in the audience. It was so big and people were so scattered about. So thank you, thank you for that. Couple of simple ground rules because of that TV and all. We're asking the audience to refrain from applauding or other ways demonstrating support or non-support for a candidate. We have just three, by the way. One got too nervous. You know, one said he's not feeling well. So we just have three. And I asked the one candidate here if she wanted to take both positions. That other candidate and her is giving her extra time, but she declined. And so sorry about that. It would have been an interesting note. He could have watched it on TV. I mean, yes. The, you know, candidates can each be given about two and a half minutes to, you know, with an opening statement, talking a little bit about their interest in running for council. We will sort of reverse order as we go through the evening. We have a number of great questions you probably may find timely. And there may be other questions you want to ask the candidates afterwards. I don't think they're all encompassing for all the issues that a council member in Oakley will face. So with that, I don't know if we want to get ready. The time person is ready? Okay, see how this works now. When 30 seconds, that means you got 30 seconds left. Then you have 50 seconds. And then stop means she comes up to the table and tells you to sit down. Yes, so she's ready for that.
Do you have to share the microphone?
Yeah, share. I'm sorry. We can have microphones, but I'm not sure you really even need a microphone. So, you know, we're ready to start with Shelley. And the rest, can I say the first question?
Well, they're going to do the opening statements.
Oh, that's our question. Okay, yes. So Shelley, far away. Question about your interest in the council and what you'd like to do and why you're on?
Thank you. Hi, Nancy Davis. My name is Shelley Fitzgerald. And I am running for council for District 2 for the City Council this upcoming November 8th of Oakley City in Oakley. And I have a few reasons that I'll describe as to why. First of all, my family and I have lived in Oakley for over 30 years now. I raised my son here in Oakley, graduated from Freedom High School, and has stayed in the area because it's such a great area to live in. And his family here as well. My desire is to keep Oakley's small-town charm alive while working towards a sustainable future where residents can shop and dine and play in their own comfort. I found myself tonight, here tonight, born out of a true desire to help guide the city that I've come to love and enjoy living in into the next chapter of its life. I believe I have the skills that are required to be an effective and valuable member of this team. My skills come from being a registered nurse for over 20 years. I currently work as an emergency department charge nurse in a high-stress, very busy emergency department. Doing this type of work has taught me how to work well with others. I have great working relationships, both with my professional colleagues as well as with the public at large. I am able to work with physicians, I would refer, senior leadership on initiatives to drive our school in a safer and stronger position. I can have candid, respectful conversations. And I'm open and willing to hear and understand of those two points. In making decisions that will impact the city and its residents, it takes courage and it takes critical thinking, both of which I'm proud to possess. When I don't have an answer, I know where to go to look for an answer. I know how to utilize my resources to find the information that I need in order to get to the truth and get to the answers. I am impassioned and I have a passion. I have a passion to roll up my sleeves and get to work. I have become very adept at finding and using limited resources in order to get the job done. If integrity is a prerequisite for this job, you can count on me.
Thanks, Maya.
I'm open-minded and I'm ready to get in there and do what it takes to bring this council along.
Hugh.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Hugh Henderson. I am running for City Council for District 2. And I'd like to begin tonight telling you a little bit about myself. I've grown up and worked in this East County, in the Far East County, my entire life. I've served the community as both a police officer and a firefighter for almost 40 years. And I've been here in Oakley for the growth and seen the change over time. I have two priorities if elected. First one's public safety, and the second one is economic growth. We need new businesses that meet residents' expectations, that bring strong tax dollars to our community. We need to bring support to our existing businesses and develop opportunities along our prime coastal waterway. As our community is growing, our police department has not. I believe we need more officers and services and increasing those without adding any tax burdens to our business. I look forward tonight to answering questions. I'm planning to stick around so we can talk about additional questions. And I want to say thank you to each one of you that are here. You're taking time out of your busy evening and listening to us all speak. Thank you.
Right about there? No? Right about there?
Just leave it on.
Okay. So, good evening. My name is Shannon Shaw. And I am running for Oakley City Council, District 4. I'd first like to take the time to thank the Friends of Oakley, the Brentwood Press, and the Oakley Senior Center for putting this night together. Residents get the opportunity tonight to learn about each candidate for City Council and what we plan to do for Oakley. This is the first year that Oakley will be holding elections by district, which means that residents from our district will get to choose who will represent them on council. District 4 covers multiple neighborhoods, including most of Vintage, parts of Cypress Road, a portion of Emerson Ranch, as well as Delaney Park and Summer Lake. I mention this because the map is crazy. Each of these neighborhoods are unique in characteristics and the concerns they have. And I will take that into account as a council representative and make sure all District 4 gets represented. 14 years ago, my husband and I moved to Oakley. We were looking for our forever home, and we found one here. My three children have all attended school here, graduated from Freedom High School, and continue to call Oakley home. I am a resident of Cypress Road. And my daughter, along with her husband, just bought a house in Vintage. Both of these are in District 4. So now she is raising my grandchildren here, meaning we have three generations of kids, three generations living in District 4. I'm a proud police wife. And my oldest daughter has also followed in my husband's footsteps, becoming a police officer, which makes me a police mom, too. So I'm sure it's no surprise that public safety is near and dear to my heart and my number one priority. Oakley's accountants have substantial growth. And we need retail and recreational improvements that will meet those needs for the increasing population. We should not have to travel outside our city to find dining, shopping, and recreation. Oakley can be the place to live, work, and play. With focus on public safety, smart economic development, and enhancing our parks and waterfronts, we can become a destination city, where everyone will want to come and spend their dollars to build our economy. As a council member for District 4, it would be my responsibility to represent you, to be your voice, and to address your concerns. I will always make my decisions in the best interest of District 4 and all of Oakley. I'm looking forward to representing all of District 4, and I'm asking for your vote. Please visit my website, shannonshow.com, and I thank you for your support.
You mentioned earlier there is another candidate that's a write-in. Unfortunately, he could not be here today, but we wanted to give everybody that fair democratic opportunity. So we did allow him to submit a two-and-a-half-minute audio clip. So if the technology works, we're going to play it a little clip for Adam.
My name is Adam Gerhardt. Good evening, citizens of Oakley. My name is Adam Gerhardt. I am running candidate for District 4. I sincerely apologize for not being able to be there this evening, but I was recently diagnosed with COVID. Somebody assumed you all liked me a lot better if I'd be staying home. With my absence and with my time being short, what I'd like to say and impress upon you, the voters, is that everyone who is in front of you, and myself included, would only be representatives of you, the voter. I would never be the representative that's going to tell you what I want to do. It's you who I need to listen to and try to give my voice to at City Hall. Talking to many residents here in Oakley, they feel they have not been listened to and their opinions and points of view have not been respected by those in City Hall. No one who lives in Oakley believes there is a pressing need for more gas stations, car washes, and still storage units. But it's no surprise that more are in the pipeline, both at the Planning Commission level and also at City Hall. I think I am not out of line saying most Oakley residents don't want oil and gas exploration and drilling near their home where their kids are playing. Yet a moratorium wasn't passed by the City Council. Most don't like the fact that thousands of new homes are being planned yet Oakley's infrastructure is overwhelmed and struggling as it is. People I talked to are questioning why are developers being held responsible for these improvements and to have them completed at the time the first house in their development hits the market? Why are these projects taking homeowners via largely increased property taxes instead of giving to the developers? What questions of responsibility are being raised by the city in building homes down Cypress in the 100-year floodplain? The developers in the city will point to levees being constructed, but who are building these levees? What are their qualifications? Who pays for levy upkeep, the maintenance, inspections? Who is responsible if there's a levy failure? Does the city have an emergency plan in the event of a catastrophic event occurring due to levy failure? These are all questions that need to be considered and addressed. Oakley's plan to pursue one-time developer fees is quickly turning Oakley into a computer city. Developer fees are also ultimately a financial dead end. The fees collect that are not recurring. And Oakley needs to free focus as priorities in order to become a unique, charming, and personal city. Focus should be placed on small business growth and promoting organic growth from within our own borders. And also seeing if we have small businesses outside that would love to make Oakley a place to do business. This is why I am running for you, the citizens of Oakley, to make Oakley a better place for our children and for ourselves. Let's get this together.
We'll start with your questions.
Okay, Shelley, you're again the number one, and you, and then Shannon. The first question is, as a prospective council member, how many city council meetings have you attended or viewed when I was on? Not in person meetings? And how have you been involved in the city in the past 12 months?
So I don't know how many city council meetings I've been to. I have not kept count. But I do make every attempt to attend as many as possible. I do unfortunately have a full-time job that I currently work on two-day meetings. So when I'm not able to fluctuate my schedule to get to a meeting, I have to plug in my earbuds for the last hour of my shift and listen in so that I have a price for what's going on in the city. How have I been involved in the last year? Well, I have spoken out at several council meetings over the past two years. I have rallied to the community to come and voice their concerns at city council meetings. I feel that being involved in my community and in the concerns that I've brought forward to the City Council, I rallied quite a crew of people who have become involved and have committed themselves to attending council meetings and saying the price of the issues themselves. And for that, I'm proud. I'm proud of the city and the citizens that have taken their city concerns to heart and become more involved so that we do have a voice. And we've learned that our voice can actually be heard. Like you just heard Adam talking about. Often times you do feel concerned and frustrated that maybe you're not being heard. But enough our councils did in the last year, listened to our concerns and voted accordingly to what we run to them. And we're very grateful for that.
Thank you. You?
Again, I don't know if I have an exact number, but I'm going to put that at six or seven in the last nine months. I would also say that I volunteered and went through the application process as a planning commission, again, to get involved in the city. The planning commission was something after the last election that the council put together and it took some time to put in place. The planning commission actually had their first meeting in May and leave the meeting month since then. I also attended and provided input as the city did the workshop on the affordable housing requirements that are coming down the road in that report we'll be up to the public and to the planning commission and the State Council in January and asked to be approved and turned into the state before April. So those are just some areas I've been involved in this just this month. Thank you.
All right. So I attend just about every city council meeting that takes place ever since I've been back in person. Sometimes when I'm even the only person in the audience. So I missed one. I was on vacation, and I watched it live online. Prior to that, I did attend online. And that was even before also getting on the planning commission, which I chair. When I have time, I also attend Pittsburgh meetings because that's where I work. And I also attend Clayton meetings because that's where my husband works. And when I have, when I really have time, I also watch Brentwood and Antioch Council meetings because I feel it's important to stay informed of what's happening in our communities around us. In the last 12 months, I also been on the planning commission, attended the affordable housing meetings. And yeah, so I guess that's probably all I can say on that.
Do you realize being a council watcher is a disease?
Yeah, I do. And I'm wondering if you have any medication?
Yeah, I just, I don't know what the disease is. But we'll think of you.
It's a good thing.
Yes, it is. Great. Okay. Next question. Are you ready guys? Ready? We'll start off with you this time. What's the most important improvement you would like to see in your city?
I'm going to go back to my opening statement. And the first thought would be to increase our police department. I think we need to have an ordinance like other cities do in the surrounding area of 1.5 officers per thousand people. The city's not at growth of 44,000. So you know, we need a police department that should be staffed at roughly 50 officers. Current staffing approval is around 40. And I think actual staffing, we're in the 32 to 33 range. So that would be a priority that needs to be, again, promoting and helping our businesses that are here and still looking for businesses to help bring on the community. The hard part about bringing on more police officers and things, we need to find ways to do this without raising taxes. And having sales tax come in versus property tax is going to be important. Because for those that have been here for a long time, you can go back all the way to 2008 when the economy took it down and Oakley lost 32% and this stuff's vibration. That hit the city hard. The city had to make some very tough decisions on what they did with services. And you know, slowly those things have been built back up. As we look out there today, could we get in that same situation again so not depending only on property tax and having some good sales tax push come in? Thank you.
Yes?
So like you, it's police. So public safety is a pretty word a lot of people use when they campaign. But it's something that I live every day with my family. So Oakley's approximately 44,000 residents. And we need a minimum of one officer per thousand residents. And that would mean 44. We're allotted for 40 now, but that's top to bottom. I would like to see a minimum of 44 officers, not counting command staff. And again, I know this can't be done easily. And we have, you know, staffing issues. We have hiring problems. And I did notice that the city council agenda came out tonight. And I'm happy to see that they will be voting on a possible incentive program to be bringing officers to Oakley. This is very important. Oakley has three beats for their police officers. One of those beats is from Empire all the way to Summer Lake. And that causes the officer to have to go from one in the town to the other to get to a call. And the police also have de-share dispatch, so they can't even write the simplest vet report in their car, which means that they have to go back to a police station to write a report. I would like to see a police substation, and I would like to see another beat. Obviously, that is up to the chief, but it's something that I would like to see happen.
Shelley?
Can you read the question first, please?
I could. What's the most improvement? Excuse me. What's the most important improvement you would like to see in the city?
So several things come to mind. I have to just put it on to both of these folks. And the police department being fully run and fully staffed is definitely a priority. And I would 100% be behind that initiative as well. I feel like there are safety concerns throughout the city, especially in regards to roadways, safe roadways. The Cypress Quarter, which I know the city is currently working on plans to improve that route. And the moral extension going out towards Sellers Road, getting that underway and coming to completion with that in a safe manner. But going hand in hand with police services, that traffic component of the police services needs to be duly addressed as well. Because some of these roadways are, you know, they're too fast. People are taking them too fast. They're speeding. There's just not enough enforcement or traffic calming measures. So putting both of those components together to create safe roadways for our communities is a top priority.
Good. Thank you. Next question. We'll start off with Shannon. Jersey Island, as we know, is owned by the Iron House Sanitation District. It is being considered for a wildlife sanctuary and a proposal of 450 single-family homes, like commercial, and the construction of a new bridge to the island. Would you support this project, and if so, why or why not?
All right. I actually have notes on this. I had the opportunity to be, to listen to a presentation from Montezuma Water about this exact project. And I did want to clarify, one of the things that they want to do is two bridges. So there is not one way in and one way out. So that was a selling feature for me. The other thing that I liked is the idea of open spaces and wildlife and some housing and a hotel. But of course, until I know what the impact is on the city, I can't be for or against it until I know for sure. It's my political answer, right? We have to know what it all entails. I will say that until, that if this is going to happen, it is going to affect East Cypress. So I'm happy to see that East Cypress is moving forward with any of those tight spaces. And also, if, we don't want a development to happen without the input of the city. We want to make sure that our standards are met. And so we need a seat at the table in order to make sure that we have a hand in what that looks like. But I'm, we all talked about waterfronts being very important. And this is going to have waterfronts. This is going to be a way to make it a destination city. This is going to be bring people in from outside to experience them they cannot experience at home. And so I think that that's going to be great for our tax revenue, and it's going to be great for the kids. And I mean, I have a printout of the presentation and a map. And it's a really cool project. And I think, I think everyone should take a look at it.
It's important that you know that councilmen or applicants cannot suggest how they're going to vote on a proposal unless it's not been submitted or visited the process. Because the developers can hold them to that position. And if they don't, they could, you know, jeopardize the whole project. So having a council member share their larger view is a legal way to do it. Oh, I'm sorry. Shelley, you're the one. You get to start. The question is, what, did you talk about Iron House? Okay. Why don't you talk about Iron House?
So I did hear about the potential of the Iron House project and the houses that might be coming there. I'm happy to hear that they are considering more than one bridge. Again, I wouldn't weigh in on a proposal until I'm able to see and vet through the details of said proposal. The number 450 doesn't sound astronomical. It sounds like that's something that is doable. One of my concerns that I've run across many times in different developer plans is when developers come before the city council and make a proposal for something like, we want to build 450 houses, and we want to put two bridges, and we're going to do all this infrastructure. And then years later, they come back and they say, we really want to make that 880 homes. And instead of the one bridge, we can only, instead of two bridges, we can only afford one bridge. And now we want variance, and we want to change our plans. So those types of things are where I would do diligence, look at the details, read all of the plans, and want to have a historical record of what has been proposed, what has been improved, and not sway from that. And then also be sure that we are following our guiding principles, following our general plan, and adhering to Oakley's vision of maintaining our small-town charm.
Thank you.
So Jersey Island. Right as just hearing it, it brings a lot of concerns to me. Growing up on Buffalo Island, knowing what it takes to maintain an island, the flood control issues on there. Also looking at an island that currently is owned by a special district. So this project would take a lot of vetting. It's going to be a long-term project. Again, these projects need to be looked at. The impacts that happen out there, the effect on the city has got to be the primary goal that we look at in the beginning. 450 homes, two cars per home. So that's more, 900 more cars coming down East Cypress Quarter. Looking at all those different things before making a decision as a council has to be important. Or open space sounds great. I don't mean to, you know, what it's going to take to maintain the islands. What is Iron House's Sanitation District's current pledge to maintain the islands? They're getting support from the state. They're getting some support from the feds to do that. But is that something that the city would want to take on? Is that another project? And is it another expense to take on in annex? So I think there's a million questions that need to be answered that you could just give your simple yes/no answer on, on annex.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Shelley is first. What would you do to bring more civility and proficacy to this? What would you do to bring more civility and proficacy to the city council's meetings and discussions? Since two of you are new, that's almost half the council right there.
I'm going to rework up to my training and what I do for a living. I have to communicate in high-stress situations on a daily basis. I have to diffuse situations that can get dangerous and get scary. I have to work with high-level executives and then turn around and work with a homeless individual that is needing assistance to find appropriate housing shelter. And I can do that with dignity. I can do that with a swift change in demeanor. I can speak with clarity. I think that bringing civility to a, to a diocese where people are having disagreements can be done. A city council is by design someplace to have safe debate. It's someplace where you can, you should, and you can feel safe to have disagreements and have differing opinions, but you need to respect one another and have the ability to communicate and see all sides of the situation and come out together for the greater good of the community.
Thank you.
So, this starts, I think, with a little bit of education. And not everybody understands the role of the city council as a council person. Now, the city council has two employees. They have the city attorney, and they have the city manager. Those are their two employees. The city council's responsible for providing good policy for those two employees so they can take their staff and make things work. As a good council person, reading your staff reports, reading your agenda packet ahead of time, getting those questions prepared and answered. So, when it's time to have that good discussion between you, everybody's on the same page. Everybody has the information, everybody's reading the information. So, that's going on there. You know, give kudos to our current council. You know, they've put a new city manager in place, and that new city manager's done an excellent job, and he's gone and been able to build his staff. And we're seeing those changes in there. We have a new police chief, we have a new HR director, we have a new community development director. So, we're starting to see the changes that the council's made. It's taken time, and it will continue to do that. But as a council member, working with your other council members, being able to communicate, to follow the rules, because there's this thing called Brown Act that everybody has to live under, so you can only have these discussions at certain times and everything, it becomes very important. But again, you know, not saying no is easy. Being able to have dialogue with other people and make those decisions, that's how you get the council to jump.
All right. So, it is okay to disagree. I am a mom, I'm a wife, I'm a sister, and I'm a boss. So, I am familiar with people disagreeing with me a lot of times. But it's a matter of staying civil and kind and listening. We all have the intention, we are doing what all the council up there now is doing, what they think is best for the city in their own way. And it may not be the way that the other person on the diocese thinks it should happen, but they're all doing what they think is best. And so, just kind of staying, the motto I have is be better and not bitter. You know, we're all here doing something for the community. We are all putting ourselves out there on the planning commission and on the city council. And so, we're not always going to agree, and as long as we're kind, and at the end of the day, we're doing what's best for Oakley, that needs to be the most important.
Thank you. The next hero will take on. What would you, what would you do to promote the city's transit options? And what do you think of the upcoming Amtrak stop in Oakley?
So, this project's been worked on by the city for many years, and transit's been a big topic for Oakley. Most of the people that live in Oakley work out of the area. Most of them commute in their cars, and transit hasn't been utilized probably to the strengths that you see in other communities. Train station's been controversial. Some people think it's a great idea, other people have lots of concerns about it. When they have the concerns, they look what's going on in the neighboring communities that have train stations, they see the problem with the unhoused and homeless folks, and they worry that that's coming to Oakley with it. Promoting it is finding a way that those transit buses are being used. We have a beautiful park-and-ride area that's there, but if you drive by that anytime during the week, if you see three or four cars there, it's a good day for it. How we change that thought process for our citizens to use it, that's going to be the challenge. We're going to have a train station. How much is it going to be used? I mean, I really couldn't answer that. Those are going to be the hard points of this. Finding ways to maybe get it so our kids or our students can use those buses and try to build it up that way so a family gets used to using it may be an option.
All right. So, again, like you said, we have the new park-and-ride that they tried to build the transit pad at a part in, which is awesome. And there's also a Try My Ride, which is a bus-sized Uber that comes to your door and takes you to appointments, which is pretty cool. My mom utilized the older version of the Try My Ride, and it was great for her because she couldn't walk to appointments, and she didn't always want to drive. I also agree that we need to promote the options that we do have for transit. The train station is coming, and I know it's a controversial topic. My aunt came to visit me, who does not drive and has not driven in years, and she took the train up to see me. And it was the coolest experience I had in seeing her in years. If that train had not been here and brought his aunt out at the time, she would not have been able to have seen me. It could also bring unique opportunities into our downtown. So, I haven't had a chance to really look at what that train station platform is going to bring, and I need to look further into it, so I have to admit that that is a subject I didn't study. I have everything else in here. But I do think that if we promote it the right way, we police it the right way, it can potentially be something good for the city.
Shannon, you're next. I gave the mic.
Oh.
So, Shelley, what's it doing? Oh, I'm sorry, Shelley. You raised your hand.
I'll have to just give this one. Yeah, the train station is controversial. I definitely have some experience with being at the end of the line of a train station currently in my work environment, and there are some situations that come along with that. Well, I drive by the Hillcrest Park Station on my way to work, and there's quite a group of characters that are making their way to the method of the next that's down the street.
Please don't take side track.
Oh, I'm sorry. But, so, and as I said, train stations that you hear about in other communities, they bring problems. Are they mitigatable? Possibly. Would it take a lot of work? Definitely. Is the train station an absolute bad idea? No. We live in a community that definitely needs transit options. We're very heavily car-dependent, and if we can move away from car dependency, we will be better off in the long run. So, it is a subject that needs to be looked at and considered thoroughly. Again, the financial implications of putting a car before a horse. Where are we with making an agreement with Amtrak? Are they actually coming? If they're not coming, are we going to invest all the dollars that are needed in order to put a platform that's not going to be used? We need to make sure that we're moving in the right direction and we're taking things in a stepwise fashion.
Shannon. Okay. What would you do to promote economic growth and development in Oakley? You haven't probably done that question before.
So, any new proposed development, I feel like it needs to have a four-step process. Is this project needed? What are the short-term and long-term costs for the city? Where is the money coming from, and what impact will it have on the city and residents? As far as economic development, you know, like I said, we need the services here for our residents. We need stores, and can I get a coffee shop on East Cypress, please? Because I have to drive really far to get my coffee. But we all need, we all pay our taxes, and we want those services, right? And so, we just have to figure out the right stores, the right economic development. We need to make sure that we are a co-business city, so people want to come here. We need to remember that when we want certain businesses, that some of those businesses don't want to come to a smaller city. We want to maintain our small city, but we want the services. All of these things have to be weighed, and so just have to make sure that every decision that we make on the council, on the planning commission, is done with the best interest of us.
Okay? You need to roll over and just go back down the aisle.
So, if we look at this, we need to look at each individual project. We need to find things that fit well for the community. And as we do that, we need a balancing act of what the residents want, what the businesses want, and what is it going to do for the city? You know, you hear over and over, we don't want this, we don't want that, we don't want this. But if we just say no, which is easy, and don't look at these individual projects, it affects the next company that's looking, the next business that's looking. So, if the city gets known as it's not business friendly, why are you only looking at Oakley when you can look at the two communities around us or another small community with the same type of business? Finding businesses to fit Oakley, you know, finding small mom-and-pop working titles that maybe even have an internet base to them a little bit would be the, some of those kind of businesses. We have some nice restaurants, we could use a few more restaurants. Everybody would like a restaurant that, you know, it's a special birthday, or an anniversary, or somebody coming into town, and we can have a nice one and not go into one of the other communities. It gets difficult as you're looking at projects, you know, it's just you can't isolate to one type of business or anything like that. But the other thing that we need to do as we work through that is, is we got to look at the current businesses that are here and that are possibly struggling, and how do we help improve them and enrich them so that brings further businesses? And we can say, as you're looking at that, hey, Oakley's helping everybody, why wouldn't we want to come to Oakley?
I wonder if I need to just say no.
Oh, thank you very much.
Economic development is obviously very important. We cannot rely on one tax developer piece forever, and we don't want to pay taxes through our noses for our mortgage forever. We need sustainable, long-term tax revenue coming in from retail business. That being said, my motto is, does this the right business, and is this the right place? And is it the right time? And we need to have those conversations upfront with our developers when they come in. We need to talk about what we need and where we need it and when we need it. There are a lot of opportunities yet to be had in Oakley, and these developers are going to be coming to Oakley. They're going to be knocking down our doors to come to Oakley. Once Oakley has laid out its identity, once we have told these developers what we are, who we are, and what we want, they're going to be striving to get into this town. They're not going to want to be the last guy on the bus. So, if they want to be part of Oakley's next generation of growth, they need to come to us with the idea that we have a clear direction, that we have a clear idea of what we want our identity to be and what we want our identity to not be. So, being a town full of gas stations has been clearly stated by multiple members of the community, and that needs to be heard, not only by our city council and by us, but it needs to be heard by our developers in a succinct, respectful way.
Okay. I guess Shelley may be the last first. The first and the last. So, this is the last question, number seven. Were there more than seven? This is a different kind of a question. Where are most of your campaign contributions coming from? And are they, and who are they coming from?
Well, my campaign has been primarily self-funded. I started off with a loan to myself, which my campaign rather, to get my initial science done. And then I've had generous donations from friends, family, and neighbors.
So... Twitter, they're not funding yet.
Twitter is not.
So, my campaign is self-funded a portion. I have received some contributions from different friends and businesses that I have worked with in my career, and some of those, some people would be considered developers or property owners within the city.
All right. My campaign is very well with a loan to myself, and I have also gotten some contributions, some from out of state, from my in-laws, thank you very much. My aunt's in North Carolina, so, from all over the country, but mostly neighbors. I also have some contributions from some businesses which would be considered developers, but in my line of work, I actually deal with a lot of developers in housing, and so I have made a lot of connections through that, and so I appreciate that support. Yeah.
I could add, just each of you tell me what you do, because I'm not, not everybody may know you. What do you do?
I am a property manager for a open-income housing community in Pittsburgh. We have 104 units, and I'm very happy to do it. We have about 350 units between me and my sister company, and we're hoping, actually in the process, they purchase a new piece of land, and we will be hoping to build more senior housing.
Thank you. What are you doing?
I failed in retirement after 40 years of public safety. I'm currently the general manager of Hookmind Sinker, a family-owned sporting store, very nice piece of artwork.
I am a registered nurse, did 20 years, 20 plus years, and I currently work in an emergency department as a chart师.
Which, what about?
Southern California.
Okay. We've got some time now, is any questions, you know, you want to ask one, sir?
I'd like to ask the candidates about their fiscal responsibilities and that.
What's that mean?
Have they had any experience in managing large dollar amounts?
Okay.
These, the these and others that they have, where and how, what was the outcome?
Okay. Sorry, Shelley, sorry, I'm ready to go.
I have never laid my hands on that kind of thing. I practice fiscal responsibility in my day-to-day work. It is part of my job duties and responsibilities to ensure that we are responsibly using hospital resources, hospital staff, responsible for staffing to patient load levels as well as the medical supplies, and we manage that one in a much smaller scale.
Managing East Cypress District prior to the great 2008 loss of the subs-valuation, the budget was about $16 million. We lost 41% of that budget there, and we slowly... We lost 41% of that budget there and we slowly built that. I work for a board of directors, which then basically I managed that budget for the board of directors.
So I found myself three years ago, my consultant passed away. And my boss looked at me and said, "Have fun, you get to do the budget this year." And I guess I did such a great job that I've been doing it ever since. So my budget last year for my facility was 1.7 million. And this year we're hoping to get it to 2. And I manage that budget every, every day. And so I answer to a board of directors with it. But other than that, I, I am responsible for not only the life of my residents, but the federal government's money and making sure that they give the services that that money provides.
Any other questions? Sir?
Yeah, I live on Cypress Road, East Cypress Road, West Cypress Road, excuse me. And so I get the residue from East Cypress Road. I would like everybody's vision on how we're going to get the traffic off of West Cypress Road and on Laurel Freeway.
Laurel Freeway.
No, sir, it's West Cypress Highway, it's Laurel Freeway.
That's right.
Exactly.
All right, so I've been saying this a lot. So East Cypress is getting 20 and a half, approved at 20 and a half million dollars. It's going to be expanding six lanes, nice and roads to Jersey Island. I know that doesn't affect West Cypress. But as well as that is the board of, sorry, the council agenda that came out tonight. They are going to be talking about the expanding Laurel to Sellers. It is in the designing phase and that will hopefully be the traffic on Cypress. I know that that's not what you want to hear and that's, that's down the road. But what I have learned in the planning commission and working with government money is things take time. And we, we vote on things today that will be down the road. But it is in the design phase. East Cypress is getting some pages. Bethel Island Road is going to cross over Delta. Laurel is going to go to Sellers. I mean, all these things are happening. And I get that until we see, you know, load loads in the ground, it doesn't speed up a lot, it's just a lot of talk. But the city hears you, they know what's happening, and these things will get changed.
I think the biggest impact that you're going to see is to reduce some of the traffic on West Cypress will be when the Laurel Road improvements are done, which buying some of that property to make Laurel Road between O'Hara and Rhodes Avenue is on the agenda for next week. The obtaining of the property to put the overpass over the railroad tracks on the end of Laurel to get it out to Sellers. But eventually getting that traffic off of coming straight up East Cypress to continue down to West Cypress and getting that traffic to move from over to Laurel via Sellers, I think is where you're going to see the biggest impact. But we're probably looking at five to seven years before all those projects are going to happen.
Unfortunately, I really can't add anything to those statements. I mean, I also feel like that's the only, the only way you're really going to see any true mitigation of West Cypress is when they open up Laurel down to Sellers. I know that there were attempts made at the Main Street in Cypress to get more traffic turned left. And I don't know if that has made much of an impact at all, but that, that was an attempt to divert some of that traffic. But again, with Laurel Road having the bottleneck at O'Hara and with it not being white-nailing through the wood to Rhodes, it's a deterrent for people to use that area. That impact that there are so, so much school traffic going through that Laurel-O'Hara intersection. People avoid it. They're, they're going to find a way to get around it. And that's going to be true even after the extension happens, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Thank you. We've all been seeing a growth of businesses in our area, gas stations and storage sheds and that kind of thing. So my question to the candidates is, thinking about Oakley and the small-town growth in a destination city, what kind of businesses would you be in favor of to bring to Oakley? To create and keep that small-town feel?
Shelley, you want to take that first?
I love the idea of nice tiny restaurants, just as much as the next person. I love visiting the Listrow and Tavern, they're great little places to grab what I like to eat. So more sit-down restaurants are definitely in order. For our district in particular, we actually are living in a food desert. We don't have fresh groceries. We go over to Lucky's and Reddy's, but that really is a trend across town. And with Laurel and O'Hara on the verge of being developed, having some sort of grocery there, preferably a small-scale grocery, we don't need a full-blown big grocery store. But having someplace where you can stop in, like a Sprouts or Trader Joe's, something that we can stop in and get something to eat quickly would be beneficial for that area.
Kind of, yeah, I know, because I agree with the grocery stores. It's definitely something to see. And some more restaurants that, as I said, great is, is finding some of those other unique little shops that you see in other cities, you know, yarn shops and specialty shops that, you know, especially to the downtown area, to make that downtown area grow a little bit. You know, you look at the Friday night bites and the movie nights and stuff like that. You see the community getting drawn down to the downtown area. We need to just be able to continue to enhance that. So it's not just on Friday nights you want to come downtown and try those different things. You want to do that every day.
So gas stations, car washes, and storage units. I just, I do want to clarify something that was said in the opening statement. I do want you all to know that not one of those have been approved by the planning commission. Not one. In the five, six months that we've been doing this, so I just want to clarify that. It's not been long, but not once has it happened. So, but that being said, I would also like to see restaurants, small businesses, a coffee shop, like I said. Grocery, fresh food, you know, there are parts of District Four that have a food desert. We are out there that we don't have a whole lot of anything. And I'd love to see a spot where maybe some pop-up shops can come. Frontwood has a little store that they just let pop-ups come in and different things. And I've actually gone a few times, so I'd like to see the different things there. Need little experiences that we can do like that, that will bring different things to Oakley. And then if we find out we love it, figure out a way to let them stay. But, you know, ways we can try it out, pop-ups, and then, and then, you know, grants for local small businesses will help too.
Hey, you ever get in a?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Robinson. I appreciate that. I would like to know from each candidate in which community activity that targeted Oakley and the Oakley residents for their benefit, that they take the most pride in and is demonstrative of their leadership ability within the community, if they could relay that out, please.
So I, I'm part of the Roadhouse Club in Pittsburgh because that's where I work. And I've been a treasurer, I've been there for three years, I've been a treasurer for three years. And that prompted me to start looking for opportunities to come to Oakley. And now I'm a member of the Rotary Club and I'm a proud member of the Rotary Club. This week, we are distributing dictionaries to the third graders, which is so cool. We've been painting the US maps on every elementary school throughout the city, which I think is amazing. So those are just some of the ways that I've been going, you know, able to contribute to the community. Also as the chair of the planning commission, so just not that I haven't mentioned that five times tonight. But yes, so those are, so those are some of the things that I've been doing and ways that I've been able to contribute.
So there's two organizations that I've spent a lot of time in Oakley with. I am a charter member of the Rotary Club of Oakley. And one of the good examples of something that we did right in the beginning is right here out front. When you look at the landscaping, we were able to, through some district funding and our own fundraising, put about $25,000 into the front of this building for the landscaping. You know, we do dictionaries and then different things. We submitted to the city and we're the only nonprofit to submit to the city to do the beer and wine and things, so the festivals, so we have a part in the festivals. But the other organization I stood on the board of directors for is the Friends of Oakley. And the Friends of Oakley have been along a long time right now. And they're known for their, their Christmas basket program where we help up to 300 families every year. Again, another home-based, Oakley-only kind of program.
I don't belong to any organized charitable organizations in Oakley right now. The one thing that I'm most proud of over the last couple of years is simply getting involved, you know, civic responsibility, getting to know my city council, attending city council meetings, and being a part of an amazing grassroots effort to protect our children at our elementary school, where there was a proposed drive-through restaurant that was to be designed to literally empty into their crosswalk. I was part of a very organized group that came together and decided that we needed to have our voices heard. And we danded together and did exactly that. Our voices were heard and that project was denied by our city council and for that, I'm proud.
I don't want to be disrespectful, I don't want that to come off, but I'm going to do the elevate in the room. And that is, one of the most current and controversial agenda items has been the development of Laurel Plaza. Ultimately, the current city council had proposed this as a conditional use permit. As such, the city has been sued by the developer. As public record, this is where I would respect say, the developer has contributed advice to a current campaign. I would like your vision regarding the safety and development of the future of the Laurel Road and not Laurel Plaza section, as well as would you, how would you represent and listen to the concerns and desires of Oakley residents on this high-stress proposal?
Who wants to start? Yeah, just start, Shelley, with Chris. You want one?
As far as that particular project location, I will hold fast to my belief that that area is designed as a neighborhood plaza. It was designed and approved as such. And with the location being prepared so close to an elementary school, I would be very forthcoming in working with developers, working with developers to come up with plans that meet that initial vision.
So that project wasn't the, you know, even though it was approved and then we came back to the conditional use permit where it was turned down, may not have been the right project for that area. But that area has been zoned for that area, it does need something. The sad part of that is we're losing the main, uh, ad now on top of it. I'm sorry, I'm showing my age today. Make the community safe. And we're losing that in September. So now we're going to have a whole area empty, which concerns me because that just opens it up for other problems, losing that business. Each project needs, each project, each location needs to be looked at individually. What's the right fit in there? We need to hear from you folks. We need to hear from the developer. We need to find a happy medium to make something like that work.
So I was very inspired by the presentation that Shelley did about the car wash that's there. And to see the community come together was awesome. And listening to the community is very important. I understand that the drive-through was, it's about the drive-through. It was about how many cars, it was about the school. So our job as council is to find the right businesses to come, but we can't force businesses to come. We're limited to what wants to be here. We are limited to what comes to us. So we have to make sure that we are listening to residents, we are talking to developers, we are letting our staff go out and try to seek the businesses that, that will suit the residents here in Oakley.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I need one more question. I do appreciate you guys are coming out and standing here, twins in activists and presenting with us. Appreciate your big shot at this little service. But I hear a lot about development, right? So my concern is, what are we going to do to maintain what we have down here, right? In, in Old Town Oakley? Because we're talking about growth, growth, growth. We're talking about Amtrak stations, talking about all that stuff, right? What are we going to do to maintain this? What are we going to do to fix this down here? I've lived here my entire life, this neighborhood is looking exactly the same. You know, we put a staple linkies when we made the traffic laws, you know what I mean? So like, what are we going to do? What's your plan to try and either spruce this neighborhood up to make it more of a draw? Or make it stable for the people that live here and continue to contribute here and continue to try to do their best efforts to keep their energy?
I can attempt this. So we need to focus just as much on building new housing as we do on maintaining what we have. So I agree, I, I don't live in this area, I'm not from this neighborhood, but I do appreciate those that are, a lot of, a lot of you guys have lived here for a very long time. So working with city staff, working with the planning department, working with traffic is, is what we really need to make sure. And you guys coming to the meetings or calling us, I'll, I'll give you a business card, I'll give you my cell phone number. You know, you can, you got to let us know what it is. Unfortunately, outside, I don't mind sometimes, right? I don't live here, so I don't drive your streets and I don't know what those problems are. But coming to the meetings, being engaged, making sure you're communicating with the staff, that's going to help. And then us making sure that the staff is, you know, handling, well, the city manager, because they're going to people that work for us, but making sure that the staff is, is being accountable. But we do need to make sure that we're fixing what we have and not just building new. So we can do both, we just have to figure out that balance. So I appreciate it, again, I'll give you my card.
And as I've been walking through the district, this is a common thing that I've heard. And it goes in a couple of different areas. It's part of code enforcement and how do we get ahold of code enforcement? How do we get follow-up from code enforcement? And then a lot of it's been on roadway maintenance and when's the last time the roads have been re-stealed? And, you know, those kind of things. Those are all very important things and you'll see that the city has a plan in that in the capital improvement plan that gets published and updated every year. But these areas do need that. And sometimes it's the squeaky wheel that gets degreased. So when there is a problem, stand in there as a problem and get the right person to the problem to maintain things. So if it's a code enforcement problem or it's a roadway problem, maybe you need the right staff member to continue with that. My worry is that if we only focused on, on housing and everything, if the economy does take that big drop, now we're not going to have that money to do those roadway improvements and stuff like that. So still having to focus on some of those businesses coming in, so we have some sales tax coming in, is important. And you know, as much as we don't like gas stations, if you look at the top seven sales tax producers in this city, it is gas stations. So those gas stations, where they are, are bringing in taxes that are helping the city. At the same, we need more, just saying they are bringing us revenue.
Yeah. I think that the downtown area has such a unique charm. And as we look forward in growing Oakley and defining that vision of what we want it to be, there's a lot of opportunities for infill development, maybe even parks. I, there's not a lot of park space within the downtown arena, so maybe some of the infill lots can be looked at for some park space or some open green space. Are there opportunities to look at redevelopment funds or rehab funds? Or looking for, looking for grants or, or opportunities to kind of help spruce up some of those areas? Like you mentioned, the landscaping here around this building, you know, there, there are, we start sprucing up some of the...
start sprucing up some of the, some of the more commercialized areas of downtown, that's going to prompt people to take pride in their homeownership, and when you start the transition of one homeowner gets pride in their ownership, and they spruce up their house, then the store starts sprucing up their house, and you kind of get this, this dawn a little bit of really making this charming area shine. And again, bringing in quality businesses and working with developers to get quality here is going to bring people from outside of the area who have a standard and who are going to want to come in and pick up those distressed properties and bring them around.
Somebody in the back, have your hand up, the blue ones with the blue lights there, okay?
It may not be a big deal for everyone, but I noticed that the streetlights from Rose Avenue up to Cypress, well, before it was up to Cypress, now because of the train station being developed, there are some streetlights, but stop there. The Rose Avenue up to that point is so dark that if you don't know the way, the road, you're going to go into the ditch. So, that's the problem. And from also Main Street up to the Brentwood, you know, Delta, it's also no streetlights.
Hey, why don't we sort of have a couple-minute wrap-up, if you can give us your best pitch? And, could you take more questions? No, I think most people have been sitting here long, they're not going anywhere.
I guess.
So, why don't you, you can tell you since you have a mind, Shelley, why don't you give us your pitch?
Okay, so I told you who I was at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming out. We really appreciate you spending your evening with us. I appreciate having the opportunity to talk with you all and let you know where I'm coming from, why I'm running for city council, and why I hope that I get your vote on November 8th. I want to talk a little bit about Oakley and Oakley's vision, that's my wrap-up. So, Oakley's vision, stated vision is, the city's leadership is working to maintain Oakley's small-town character while strongly encouraging the development of new industries to employ the growing local workforce. I can take that vision to heart, and I can run with it, and we can work with it. I think that Oakley is no longer a baby city. We hear the term infant city or young city. Oakley is now 22-years-old, and I think that Oakley can grow up all of our big boy bands and define what our vision is, define what our identity is, and we can work towards reaching that goal. Holding true to vision, again, means holding true to our strategic plan and our general plan. It means respecting both the privilege and the responsibility that comes with being a waterfront Delta city. We need to respect our Delta waterways, and we need to hold on to that agricultural history that we have had, and preserve it for our children and our grandchildren. I know that safe, sustainable growth is, is paramount. We need to sustain what we do, and looking at our growth and our future, we need to ask the question with every decision that we make, is this going to sustain for the long run? Is it going to be just as important in 20 years as it is today? And if it is not, if the answer to that question is no, we need to rethink what our decision is all the time. My hope for tonight is that we all have had an opportunity to learn what each of our campaigns is about, and come away with an appreciation for what each and every one of us can offer to this great city, because at the end of the day, we are all here to make Oakley a great city.
I appreciate the opportunity tonight that I got to share my opinions and my thoughts over the questions we heard. I really enjoyed walking through District Two and meeting so many people. And the thing that came out of tonight that I see the most is, the city can't go wrong within any of the three candidates that are up here. And saying that, I appreciate the Robert Press and the Friends of Oakley for supporting this, and I hope I have earned your support for tonight.
Alright, thank you, everybody who came out this evening, and for all of you watching at home. You've listened and learned about all of us, where we stand on our issues in both our districts and all of Oakley, and I hope that your questions were answered. If not, I will make myself available, I'm sure I shouldn't talk to them, but I will be here after. You can email me at shannonshawforOakley@gmail.com, and there's also a contact page on my website, shannonshaw.com. So, I am your candidate for city council, but I'm also a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and your Oakley neighbor. So, I never thought when I moved to Oakley I would ever run for city council, but Oakley's given me an amazing place to raise my family, and this is my way that I can give back to the city that I love. So, as I mentioned earlier, we've seen growth, and we need the retail and recreation to match that gap. We need to become the place to live, work, and play, and a destination city without losing our small-town charm. So, I take great pride in living in District Four and for this opportunity to be your elected representative. Remember, election day is November 8th, early voting has already begun. Please make sure your voice is heard and that your vote counts. You know, simply look at your ballot, check the box, that's Shannon Shaw. Thank you for your support.
I think, you know, as you look at these candidates, these candidates, you are really a blessed community to have candidates that are articulate, informed, and interested and committed. Primary thing that people ought to be looking at is the character of the people observed, and that character is really important, and I think it's the personification of the group that you have for you. You should really be thankful, I did the Brentwood candidate night last week, and, you know, we were trading at least three for a year. I think, you know, I was involved, I was involved in the original creation of Oakley with Mayor Anderson when he got Quinn 20 years ago, and, you know, and it was really grown. I'm excited when I come to Oakley, I try to heartbreak and patronize as many businesses as possible, and, you know, you should, you should feel very good about your success. It's a slow train, but it's a long train to ride, and you've really come a long way, so you should be the one, we should be applauding you for what you've done. Thank you.
John, thank you so much for volunteering, coming out and helping today. I've known John for 23 years, and, but again, I want to thank all of you for coming out and all the people that are watching online. This will be live on the press dot net tomorrow, so you can share it with your friends and family that weren't able to be here. But again, I want to thank the Friends of Oakley for helping support, and the Oakley Senior Center for allowing us to use this venue, and just thank you all very much. And like I say, it's so important that you go out and vote and you encourage your neighbors to vote. One of the things with these districts, they're very small sections compared to what it used to be. Someone's going to win by two or three votes, so when you think your vote doesn't count, oh, somebody's voting, or my neighbors are voting for that person, go out and vote, encourage your neighbors to vote, because I guarantee you, with these new districts, same we're doing here in Brentwood, they're going to be very, very close races because it's a small area, so.
Every registered voter gets a ballot in the mail, so you have no excuse for not voting.
Exactly. Thank you all, have a great day, go carefully.